Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Dodi Amor's Parade. I take call the right. The acronym is AMPAC. I'm the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 98, Class 98. What did we learn in Class 97? Well, we started learning a little bit more about a case commonly known as the United States of America versus Burton, right? Rodney Burton, but Rodney Burton referred himself as Rodney Burton Bay, right? So Good Brother Rodney was standing on this square. He was using every last skill set he had that he had learned about being a Amish American, right? And the end result was what? He was still incarcerated. So therefore, what do we take away from that particular case? Well, we understand that Good Brother Burton, Burton Bay, was checking every box, right? But we all know that every last Moore has been doing the same thing for decades, right? So each one of the Union States, as well as the United States, you know, dealing with their federal government, they already know exactly what the Moore is going to say in advance. As soon as you say you're an Amish American, they know the next 10 steps you're getting ready to take with them, right? They're already prepared, right, to go ahead and find you guilty. But they know that you're going to waste the court's time. But at the end of the day, you're going to end up doing time unless you take a plea bargain, right? So like I said, a lot of Moors on a conveyor belt straight to jail. And it's because the Moors have been miseducated, right? And with that miseducation, unfortunately, there's been adjudication and then people are being incarcerated, right? Dealing with incarceration, right? So the only way for us to change this path that we've been on is to course correct. We have to unlearn what we've learned and what is it that we have to replace it with? We have to replace it with well-settled principles of international law. And what is international law? Well, international law is a combination of not only treaties and conventions, but it's also our own constitutions. Constitution is regarded as international law, right? So after that, we have to study the United Nations Charter. We should study world history regarding other states' constitutions and how other states get into relations with other states. We have to study these things, right? So at the end of the day, we have to unlearn what we've learned. Now, for the record, I want to say thank you very much to Good Brother Taj Sri Bay. If it wasn't for Taj Sri Bay, there would be no Jay Jermaine Bay, right? And we all know there would be no Taj Sri Bay without Noble Dua Lee, right? So, you know, I want to give credit where credit is due. I first started studying and learning from Taj Sri Bay on his videos in the year 2018. I watched them all through 2019. I watched them all through 2020. And for the most part, I watched them all through 2021, right? Because I was interested in learning. But one of the things that Taj continues to say is, "Don't believe me, do the research," right? I'm a research guy. Another thing that Taj would say is, "Hey, Moors need to go and establish their own study groups," right? And we continue the teachings and the learnings about what it is to be a Moore. And that's one of the things I set out to do, is to start a study group, right? And through my study group, I continue to study myself. Because the best student is actually the teacher. The teacher has to take the time to study the material and come up with a curriculum or how they're going to actually present that material and have a good understanding of it. In order to teach it, you must understand it, right? And not just understand it, simplify it, right? So I want to give credit where credit is due to Good Brother Taj Sri Bay. By no means, you know, through AMPAC Study Session, is it a critique in terms of it being a negative critique of Taj Sri Bay. But at the same time, like Taj would tell you, the truth does not require an apology, right? So I'm going to keep talking about these truths. Taj Sri Bay has, what, 10, 20, 30 years of history that we can go back and watch his videos and start to critique what it is that he's taught and what he shared and what was the results, most importantly, of what it is that he taught. And unfortunately, I hate to say, that a lot of Moors ended up, you know, dealing with a lot of legal disputes that found themselves losing their houses, cars. They lost their jobs. They lost their children. A lot of Moors lost their freedom. And the reality is, you know, when you study the United States of America, you study their several states, they allow Moors to get a win from time to time, right? They allow one more to win, you know, 199 Moors will lose and one more will win. And that one more would go to YouTube and say, "I beat him." And next you know that one more is like Pied Piper. Everybody's falling with that one more deal because he got a win. It's like somebody at the gas station winning a scratch off and the gas station puts a big sign on the window, "This person won $25,000." So everybody runs to that gas station because they say, "That's where everybody wins with that scratch off," right? So when you deal with the United States of America and their several states, they allow Moors to win under what's called discretionary. From time to time, they let Amish Americans win. That way, Amish Americans will stay on the wrong path because they know that Amish Americans are in a status of followership instead of scholarship, right? So don't ever think for one moment, just because you win a little case with the United States or one of their several member states, that you actually have done it the right way. Because the reality is this, you wasn't supposed to be in their courts in the first place. Imagine that. So your win means absolutely nothing because you wasn't supposed to be in their courts. If you're in their court, that means they still consider you a citizen of the United States of America. So therefore, when we start to beat the United States through our own constable courts, that's a real win. Other than that, hey, just chalk it up to saying you was one of the very few that they allowed a discretionary win, right? That's what we must understand, all right? So like I said, we're going to keep talking about these truths because the truth will set us free, right? Okay, let's go ahead and get in the class. Okay, so as Moors know, we always open up the Constitution. Constitution is paramount. The Constitution provides us with what's called protections. The Moors don't understand that ever since 1880, right, after the Sultan signed a multilateral treaty with the Europeans, including the United States of America, in 1880, the Sultan signed a multilateral treaty commonly known as the Madrid Convention, Article 15. And Article 15 had two paragraphs. Whereas the Sultan agreed through a treaty, which is law, international law. It gave the Moors two decisions. They say you can choose to return and consent back to a Moroccan government in the empire or you can choose to remain as a naturalized foreigner, right? A citizen within a foreign country. But in order to stay in that foreign country, you still got to come back to Morocco and still get permission from the Moroccan government to remain in a foreign jurisdiction. For example, a lot of Moors right now, especially Amish Americans, who got one foot in, one foot out of the jurisdiction of America, don't realize they have to pledge their consent back to a Moroccan government. They have to pledge consent and they have to prove it. And that's the key. You have to prove it that you pledged your allegiance to a Moroccan state and that you renounced and denounced any naturalized status from the United States of America. You must reject them in writing. And that must come from a competent state because the state's got to recognize the Moore. And then the state after that does the work on your behalf. The national, the state doesn't send the foreigners anything. Your state represents you and the state sends it on your behalf because the state is representing you. That must be understood. So since 1880, the Moors have not been able to prove that they have returned to Morocco, but yet they always knew something was wrong and they were always seeking a solution, right? We've tried some and everything, Black Panthers, you name it. Nothing has worked. Why is that? Because Moors don't realize that the treaties have given the United States of America permission. On a treaty of Madrid, Article 15, paragraph 2, allows the United States of America to have their civil and criminal jurisdiction over all nationals of the United States of America. How did Moors end up becoming nationals of the United States of America? It's because of A, the 13th Amendment, B, the 14th Amendment, C, the 15th Amendment, D, the Naturalization Act of 1870, Chapter 62, Section 7. So therefore, the United States of America's internal laws turn the Moors into citizens. All their internal legislation caused the Moors to become citizens on paper. That's called escheat and hypophication, right? But then the Sultan turned around and did what? He confirmed it. The Sultan confirmed the naturalization status of Moors in the Treaty of Madrid, 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1 and 2. The Sultan confirmed it. He gave the United States of America and the other 12 secretary powers permission to hold the Moors in a naturalization stance. But he also gave the Moors instructions, just like Dorothy had instructions, to click her heels three times. The Sultan left a provision in the Treaty of Madrid for the Moors to click their heels three times and immediately they come back to Morocco. What about Morocco? Keep in mind, when Dorothy went to Oz, she left from in the middle of the street to begin the move. When she clicked her heels, she found herself right back where she left off. So the Moors aren't going anywhere. It's an act. Through legislative act, you consent on a document to return to Morocco. You're already standing in Morocco. But it's about jurisdiction and jurisdiction is set forth with paperwork. The paperwork must come from your state. It's about jurisdiction. And jurisdiction is established under one word called state. And what establishes a state? A constitution. So without the constitution, there's no state. Without the state, there's no constitution. So if you have no constitution, then now all of a sudden, now you're standing in America. So when you pledge your consent to return to Morocco, immediately you're now standing in Morocco again, just like that, just like Dorothy. Dorothy bumped her head. She got caught up. She was spinning. You bumped your head. But now you must come back into the consciousness of understanding there was a set of instructions no different than a Rubik's Cube. The average one of us, 90% of us, have never taken the time to read the instructions on how to figure out a Rubik's Cube. You know why? Because we're just not that interested. Or we don't have the patience or the discipline to read the instructions. But we all know there was instructions that came with the Rubik's Cube. Life is about instructions. If you don't follow instructions, more than likely, you're going to fail, right? So we must read the instructions and the instructions the whole time was in our treaties. Keep in mind, the treaties precede Noble Dua Lee. Noble Dua Lee established the temple in 1913. All the treaties came out before 1913. Noble Dua Lee had the same responsibility to follow the instructions of the treaties the same way we do in the year 2023. All right, Moore is just simply a Moore. We all obligated to return back to Morocco according to the Madrid Convention of 1880. Noble was born in 1886. Noble was born right into a naturalization stance because of the Treaty of 1880. It made no difference what the United States internal legislation is. Guess what the treaty says? "In treaty Supreme Law of Land, that's where you put your focus." Don't worry about their constitution. Worry about the treaty because the treaty is about who? Moors and Morocco. So Noble was born right into a naturalization stance. Thus the reason why he said, "We're descendants of Moroccans." Born in America. How were we born in America? We were naturalized into a jurisdiction. We came out and, like Dorothy, we ended up in Oz. How do we get back home? You click your heels three times. What's the clicking of three times? Come back to three branches of government of the state. And once you consent back to the state, all of a sudden now, you back in Morocco, just that easy. It's just that easy. But we never understood the due process or what's commonly known as repatriation or expatriation. We never understood due process. We never understood the administrative reforms that we need to do for ourselves. So we'll keep talking about that today, right? We'll keep pointing out our problems, then we'll point out solutions, okay? Let's continue. Okay, so as the Moors know, we're still going over the United Nations Charter of 1945, Chapter 6, about the Pacific Settlement of Disputes. Right now, the Moors have an internal dispute called nationality. We got a name crisis on our hands, right? Identity crisis. We got to fix it. Well, how do we fix it? Well, we fix it with first education. But the reality is, what is the education all about? It's about pointing out your treaties because when in doubt, pull out the treaties and the treaties already set forth what your nationality is. But unfortunately, the Amish American teachers did not teach us about treaties. You hardly hear Amish American teachers going through the Act of Algesiras of 1906. You don't see them teaching about the Treaty of Madrid and its 18 articles. Why is that? If treaty Supreme Law of Land, why were we not studying the treaties? Why were we not studying international law in the fullest understanding of what that's all about? This is international law on how to deal with a dispute. And right now, we got a dispute about nationality and how to declare our independence, all right? So let's study some more about that. How do we settle the dispute of nationality? Okay. I'm going to show a video. The video is about the Good Brother Ilmael Shabazz, commonly known as Malcolm X, right? Let's go to the board. What are we going to learn from the Good Brother? Well, first of all, we're talking about the Charter of the United Nations, Chapter 6, Article 33, about the Pacific Settlement of Dispute. But today, we're going to learn a little bit more about what Good Brother Ilmael Shabazz was talking about in the 60s, okay? Here, 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 here we go. Ilmael Shabazz, i.e. Malcolm X, was on a path to independence and nationalism, right? Nationalism and through the United Nations organs. Malcolm studied Africa and China's statehood claims of independence and acts of decolonization. Let's read again. "Ilmael Shabazz, i.e. Malcolm X, was on a path to independence and nationalism through the United Nations organs. Malcolm studied Africa and China's statehood claims of independence and acts of decolonization." Now, do y'all think it's a coincidence that Malcolm, i.e. Ilmael Shabazz, was hanging out in Egypt? Who else came from Egypt? Noble Dua Lee. Right? So every time our people travel abroad, we come back brand new. Timothy Drew went to Egypt, came back Noble Dua Lee. Malcolm X went to Egypt, came back Ilmael Shabazz. Every time you go across the waters abroad, you come back with knowledge itself to understand it's about, you need a declaration of independence. You need a constitution in order to decolonize. Noble Dua Lee comes back and he's waving a Moroccan flag. He's telling us that we're Moors. He's hanging out with dignitaries all of a sudden on an international level. Malcolm was the same way. He comes back, Ilmael Shabazz, and all of a sudden, he's hanging out with dignitaries all of a sudden. This was in the 60s. So let's learn a little bit more about what Malcolm, the path that he was on before he was assassinated because he was getting too close to the answers to the test. But Moors never picked up the torch right when he failed. Been over 60 years, we haven't picked up the torch. Let's listen. Now, before I start the video, Malcolm is going to talk about this word nationalism. No?
Nationalism. Noun, identification with one's own nation and support for its interests, especially to the exclusion or detriment of the interests of other nations. Their nationalism is tempered by a desire to join the European Union. Similar are chauvinism, jingoism, flag-waving, eccentricism, ethnocentricity, advocacy of or support for the political independence of a particular nation or people. Scottish nationalism. Similar are separatism, secessionism, isolationism, secretarism, and patriotism.
All right, thank you. So we're going to listen to Malcolm. He's going to keep using this word nationalism. He's also going to talk about independence, right? "Nationalism, identification with one's own nation and support for its interests, especially to the exclusion or detriment of the interests of other nations." Next section. "Appreciate of a support for a political independence of a particular nation or people." What did we learn about the word political? That means state. You need what? State independence. So nationalism, the world calls a nationalism movement. What does a nationalism movement mean? People now declaring their independence through statehood, right? And after that, they're in act what? A constitution. That's what nationalism means. It's a step-by-step process to seek political independence, right? Let's listen to Malcolm. So this video right here, the name of it's Malcolm X's legendary speech, "The Ballad or the Bullet," okay? All right. I'm going to start it at approximately the 14 minute and 30 second mark. We're going to listen to about five minutes, okay? Really pay attention.
This government has failed us. The government itself has failed us. And the white liberals, who have been posing as our friends, have failed us. And once we see that all these other sources to which we turn have failed, we stop turning to them and turn to ourselves. We need a self-help program, a "do it yourself" philosophy, a "do it right now" philosophy. It's already too late philosophy. This is what you and I need to get with. And the only time, the only way we're going to solve our problem is with a self-help program. Before we can get a self-help program started, we have to have a self-help philosophy. Black nationalism is a self-help philosophy. What's so good about it? You can stay right in the church where you are and still take black nationalism as your philosophy. You can stand in any kind of civic organization that you belong to and still take black nationalism as your philosophy. You can be an atheist and still take black nationalism as your philosophy. This is a philosophy that eliminates the necessity for division and argument. Because if you're black, you should be thinking black. And if you're black and you're not thinking black at this late date, well, I'm sorry for it. Once you change your philosophy, you change your thought pattern.
This revolutionary enzyme hack will balance your blood sugar all day long. Put one drop under your tongue after you eat and die by-
Once you change your thought pattern, you change your attitude. Once you change your attitude, it changes your behavior pattern. And then you go on into some action. As long as you got a sit-down philosophy, you'll have a sit-down thought pattern. And as long as you think that old sit-down thought, you'll be in some kind of sit-down action that'll have you sitting in everywhere. It's not so good to revert to what you're going to do as a sit-in. Then right there, past reach, right there, it brings you down. What goes with it? What think of the image of someone sitting? An old woman can sit. An old man can sit. A chump can sit. A coward can sit. Anything can sit. Well, you and I have been sitting long enough and it's time today for us to start doing some standing and some fighting back there. When we look at other parts of this earth upon which we live, we find that black, brown, red, and yellow people in Africa and Asia are getting their independence. They're not getting it by singing "We Shall Overcome." No, they're getting it through nationalism. It is nationalism that brought about the independence of the people in Asia. Every nation in Asia gained its independence through the philosophy of nationalism. Every nation on the African continent that has gotten its independence brought about through the philosophy of nationalism. And it will take black nationalism that to bring about the freedom of 22 million Afro-Americans here in this country where we have suffered colonialism for the past 400 years.
Did you hear what he said? The man said this in the 60s. He understood what it required for us to decolonize and required independence. At the time that Good Brother Malcolm was hanging out in Africa, there was approximately 33 independent African states. They taught him the ways of how to proclaim independence. This is why he came back with such confidence, right? When you see Malcolm with the beard, that's Ilmael Shabazz. When you don't see the beard, that's Malcolm X, the black man. He left the black man behind. He consciously became more of an independent thinker, a critical thinker, to understand how to uplift fallen humanity in a competent way. He understood the plight of the Africans or what they did to decolonize. He knew it wasn't about bullets. He knew it was about the pen. This is why he was on his way to the United Nations. And what have we done to pick up the torch from where he fell? Nothing. All we've done is written, written affidavits. We've done everything internally when he was on his way to do something externally. What does externally mean? On an international level instead of on a civic level of dealing with civil rights. He knew about human rights on an international level. Next you know, he's gone. But guess who he talked to before he left? Martin Luther King. And Martin Luther King comes out and say, "Yeah, you know that whole thing I did when I have a dream?" Yeah, that was a nightmare. He said, his most iconic speech, he turned around and said, "That's not a dream, that's a nightmare. I've miseducated the people." He knew it. He knew it wasn't about integration. He knew it was all about nationalism. He knew it was about independence. He knew it was about constitutions. If you go back and listen to Martin Luther King, he started talking about, even before the Constitution was written, "We was here." Before the Clement landed, "We was here." He started talking out loud. Next you know, he's gone. They knew his next step was what? To pick up the torch where Malcolm left off, i.e. Ilmael Shabazz. Next you know, two Kennedys are gone, all in the 60s. Why? Because they knew what Malcolm and Martin wanted to do. The Kennedys had a pen. They had power. Next you know, they're gone. Why? To stop the momentum of nationalism in Morocco. To stop the movement of independence in Morocco. You must understand, Moors, this is not a game. But you must educate yourself and educate those around you. That way, this knowledge that Malcolm tried to share with us will never, ever, ever be silenced again. We are stronger together, but we can also be very weak together as well. And we've been very weak for decades since Malcolm left and Martin left. We've been weak as a people because we've been trying to enforce civil rights and talking about enforcing the Constitution. That ain't nothing but civil rights. Has nothing to do with international law. So if Malcolm knew this, and he comes back and now he's Ilmael Shabazz and he's talking about going to the United Nations to follow the footsteps of China and the Africans, Martin knew this, the Kennedys knew this. knew this the the Kennedys knew this how are you gonna sit here and say that our own people didn't know about this over the past sixty years especially with the internet a lot of our people knew the answer to the test they just refused to enforce it I wanna say thank you to good brother Il Malik Shabazz I thank you for having courage good brother and I want you to know something we will continue the good works on the path to the United Nations that's a guarantee so instead of us going to the United Nations and finishing the works of good brother Noble Dwyer Lee and good brother Il Malik Shabazz what did we do this is the case of United States of America versus Rodney Levon Burton Bay here's what we ended up with in twenty twenty year twenty twenty-one this is what we still doing look at what's happening here do you see what's happening you see what I highlighted it was the United States Court and then it was the United States of America as the person sort of person and the United States Court so the states the states the state and its representative of the court came in and prosecuted Rodney Levon Burton they have a state they have a court okay where was Rodney Levon Burton's state where was his court where was his representatives cuz you know there was prosecutors involved with all this where was the Moors where was Rodney Levon Burton Bay's representative where was his consul general where was his minister foreign affairs where was his ambassador keeping in mind that the good brother told them that he was what I am a free free sovereign Moor but he couldn't prove it cuz he failed to consent back to a Moroccan state then he turned around and said I'm internally in the jurisdiction of his ancient Moabite forebearer okay what jurisdiction cuz jurisdiction is defined by what a constitution in a state so everything he's saying right now is patently frivolous and arbitrate capricious why cuz he can't prove it doesn't that doesn't mean he's not a Moor he couldn't prove that he's a Moor it's about proof he had no protections for someone to come in and prove it for him so just like Il Malik wanted freedom so did Burton but Burton was found guilty right but watch this the court's pointing out that Burton had Moorish beliefs why they said he had Moorish beliefs cuz he couldn't prove who he is let me ask you a question when you look at your mother you do you look at your mother and say I believe that's my mother or you say I know that's my mother so when they say the Moorish belief they say these Moors can't prove who they are so they believe who they are but can't prove it you gotta see what they're doing here in these court documents so Rodney Burton had Moorish beliefs cuz he couldn't prove that he was a Moor what then they turn around and say you need to take a psych evaluation cuz you think you're somebody that you are not sir you are not Burton Bay cuz you can't prove it number one you're not a Moorish American cuz there's no such thing as a Moorish American even in the treaty cuz he was trying to enforce the treaty of peace and friendship he couldn't show them in a treaty of peace and friendship anywhere it said Moorish American or Moorish or any type of Moorish American title whatsoever cuz he said he was a Moor American okay where's that in the treaty it don't exist and the treaty said it was state on state is Moroccan state of empire and United States of America where was Burton's representative from the Empire Morocco and here's where he's arguing here's the catch Burton filed several affidavits with the district court arguing in part that he was not a citizen of the United States and that the court therefore lacked jurisdiction all the Moors say this is a knee-jerk knee-jerk response okay Burton if I could ask him a question since you say you're not a citizen I got no problem with that you can say that okay prove it where's his constitution can he show a birth record from his Moroccan state does he have Moroccan identification where's the representative to come in and provide all that documentation it don't exist so therefore even when he said the court lacked jurisdiction the reality is the court definitely has jurisdiction why because of the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty article fifteen paragraph two getting United States of America jurisdiction over Moors who what who are being who are still naturalized in America who have failed to return to Morocco through a proper remission who have not pledged their leashes back to a Moroccan state government and Moroccan laws what was he supposed to re consent back to for example AIPAC's constitution provides what protections just protections for Moors in Morocco for Moors in Morocco for Moors in Morocco the constitution provides just protections why because we have what established we have established laws regarding what our state so Rodney Burton was a nationalist example Rodney Burton Bay was a national AIPAC AIPAC would have obligations to come and do what represent him for example listen Brittany Griner Brittany Griner is a citizen of the United States of America but more specifically she's a citizen of the United States International Organization even though quiet is kept you can't be a citizen of a corporation we're talking about that another day but Brittany was locked up in Russia what is Russia a state so who represented Brittany listen the United States what it say at the bottom Biden speaks on WNBA star Brittany Griner's release who's representing Brittany her representatives from what the de facto state keep in mind de facto means what a fact so here's the president vice president and you know they probably had ambassadors minister foreign affairs consul generals representing Brittany over in Russia so they got an embassy in Russia and all the representatives of the United States was at that embassy representing Brittany Griner okay Burton who's representing Burton cuz he said he said he's not a citizen of the United States okay Burton you're a citizen or national what state you got identification that proves that can we contact your embassy consulate or your state you say the courts of the United States lack jurisdiction will prove it don't just say what's happening listen Moors love this right here Constitution United States of America seventy-nine or the const or the Constitution United States International Organization of eighteen seventy one eighteen seventy one is false Article three section two clause one the Moor love this but yet the Moors don't understand it okay what was Article three section two clause one about it says judicial power shall extend to all cases in law and equity arising under this constitution the law of the United States and treaties made or which shall be made under their authority to all cases affecting ambassadors or public ministers and consuls to all cases of admiralty and maritime jurisdiction to controversies to which the United States shall be a party to controversies between two or more states so United States of America or more specifically the United States International Organization had what a dispute with who Russia so it was state on state dispute the United States were representing Brittany Griner Brittany Griner wasn't representing herself she had representation competent representation at that elected officials that was representing three branches of government of the United States International Organization so okay Burton Bay tell me since you say you're not a citizen of the United States then tell me which state that you come from when now you can say okay United States of America you guys constitution says Article three section two if there's a controversy between two or more states then what do you do you bring in who you bring in ambassadors ministers and consuls to do what oversee the due process of treaties and then within the treaty it's gonna say which court has jurisdiction so our bilateral treaties with the United States of America says who has the judicial power is consul court so my question to Burton is tell me the name of your state then tell me the name of the minister consul or ambassadors who's representing you and then tell me what did they do next based upon the those those common authorities to enforce the treaties on your behalf it don't exist and guess what these list of names didn't exist for them either documentary evidence as an example Taj Bay went to jail Light Bay went to jail Sharon Bay went to jail Jamal Bay went to jail Lamont Eel is currently in jail Rodney Burton Bay went to jail and is still in jail now and I say this respectfully cuz this is AIPAC study session we're here to study right we have to figure out what we did wrong so we can fix it when Taj went to jail what state did he invoke did Taj follow since Taj keeps saying enforce the constitution okay Taj tell me Article three section two which parties you invoked Taj that's my question to you what's the name of your state Taj tell me the name of the ambassador minister foreign affairs or consul general that represented you when you went to jail and tell me about the due process of what they did is the common authority to oversee the treaties and more specifically tell me that you petitioned the judicial power of the consul court to deal with your traffic ticket tickets like you said he had like thirty-eight tickets Taj you've been telling us to enforce the constitution did you do it the answer is okay that's looking at students okay did Light Bay every time she went to jail did she follow Article three section two clause one no when Sharon Bay went to jail did she follow Article three section two clause one no when Jamal Bay went to jail did he enforce the constitution Article three uh clause two section one or should I say Article three section two clause one did Jamal enforce that no Lamont's currently in jail Lamont said he's the consul general now wait a minute that's not laughing Lamont cuz guess who commissioned or gave him the confidence that he's he can be the consul general you know who did that Taj Me Bay Lamont just woke up one day said I'm gonna be the consul general of Morocco he he self-appointed himself and guess who turned around and said that's what's up Taj Me Bay now Lamont gets arrested but yet true de jure consul generals have what's called privileges and immunities because they're the common authority of their state they can't be touched they have qualified immunities like a force pillar around them they can't be touched but yet eighteen sheriffs jumped on good brother Lamont Eel on video and then the Moors turned around with that video on YouTube to show the whole world that a so-called consul general got detained don't you know that would have been a a a violation of international law that violates the customary norms of international law for any representative of the state that has privileges and immunities to be detained or arrested but the United States didn't care that Lamont got locked up and it was gonna be on national TV or whatever why cuz they know Lamont Eel is what his status is patently frivolous and arbitrate capricious he's not the common authority of a state ask Lamont what's the name of his wazir of his state or prime minister or president or sootin what's the name of the legislators of the legislative branch of his state who's the speaker of the House Lamont Eel what's the name of the judge of your judicial branch right because Moors keep talking about especially good brother Lamont and I say that respectfully he loves turning and forcing the constitution okay Lamont did you enforce the constitution Article three section two clause one did you do that the answer is no we're failing against Moors we've delayed our own justice because we don't follow instructions why don't we follow instructions because our Moorish American teachers haven't showed us the instructions at the same time our Moorish American teacher said don't believe me do the research and Moors haven't been doing the research so since we don't do research what happened things like this is what happens you got third-party interlopers who pop up and start to control the narrative this is Audi Bay Publications website it's technically an e-commerce platform that's all it really is it has some information don't get me wrong some history but technically speaking when you first open up something you look at a newspaper or magazine the first thing you see is what gravitates you that's what they really want you to know right for the magazine okay soon as you open up what's the first thing you really see order by money order it's about money it's about what selling books that's why it has books 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 you would never get your independence with a book international law is free online go Google it you wanna know something about international law it's free you wanna download anything from the United Nations it's free you wanna study something with the United States of America all their stuff is public it's free none of their stuff is in a book constitutions is not a book United Nations Charter is not a book legislation is not a book three branches of government is not a book a book is what literature government is what legislation Moors don't know the difference between legislation and literature this is our problem we're miseducated we're too busy studying books reading books and writing books we've delayed our own justice but here but but check this out like I said soon as you open up what's it about there we go that's what it's about all about finance 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 e-commerce platform to sell you information about your own history and we love each other as brothers and sisters why are we charging each other to tell each other something that we all need to know cuz we're all in this together this is shameful what else is shameful okay here's some classes so you come down here and talks about these classes right talks about these classes okay look what it says right here after the proclamation update class on three twenty-nine twenty-three we return to our regularly scheduled classes where any contribution is necessary to enter the class see they had done a few classes for free now they gonna go back to charging Moors again this is shameful you gotta pay a contribution in order to enter to learn about you being a Moor this don't make sense what is your mother or your father What did your mother, or your father, or your uncle charge you to have a plate of food? You're supposed to feed each other. Now, listen up, especially the wazirs, sayarrahas, house duazie, consul general, all the Kazee judges. Listen to this. I'm gonna start right here. RBP Publications put this on here recently, they said, definitely no need to go anywhere or set up Moroccan states when the entire state has been opened up because they operated on the doctrine that was void then and unavoidable now. RBP Publications is publicizing that you don't need a Moroccan state. At Pack Study Session has ninety-eight classes, packed full of reference points. RBP Publications won't show you any cross-reference to what they just said, and why you don't need a Moroccan state. They won't prove it, they'll just say it because they know Moors are in followership instead of scholarship. My challenge to RBP Publications is this. Prove what you just said, that Moors don't need a Moroccan state, prove it. Prove it. Don't just say it, prove it. Also, let me say this, to all the consul generals, take a screenshot of this, please, on your computer, and save it for further evidence for the future. This type of foolishness is going to stop. This is an act of genocide. Noah Dali said, be careful, because your owner pulled you back into slavery. Even the United States of America's thirteen colonies had a Declaration of Independence, and then they wrote a constitution. Every state on planet Earth has a constitution. And this e-commerce platform is telling you, you don't need a constitution. You don't need a Moroccan state, but the whole world operates through states. This is an act of genocide. And this will stop. I don't promise you, I guarantee you. What I have up here on the board, Moors all know about this, this is the nineteen oh six expatriation document. Nineteen oh, nineteen oh six expatriation, right, citizenship abroad, protections abroad. Right? Moors are familiar with it, we always say, go to page four fifty-nine and four sixty to learn about Morocco. But on this document, okay? According to the PDF, I'm on page ten, right in the center, ten. This, what we're about to read is about proof. Rodney Burton could not prove who he was. It's because we were not taught to follow instructions about what all states do on planet Earth. This is why you need a state, Moroccan state. Because a state is obligated to these reforms or administrative due process to assist you with what we're about to read. Okay? No, but can you read this, uh, first paragraph from here to here?
Uh, Department of State, December fifteen nineteen oh six. Honorable Robert Bacon, the Assistant Secretary of State. Sir, by an order dated of July third of nineteen oh six, the undersigned word constituted abroad to inquire into the laws and practice regarding citizenship, expatriation, and protection abroad, and to report recommendations for legislation to be laid before Congress pursuant to the recommendation of the Committee on Foreign Affairs of the House of Representatives contained in the report of the committee dated on June sixth of nineteen oh six.
Okay, now keep in mind, we're talking June sixth nineteen oh six, right? Around the year nineteen oh six, right? What happened in nineteen oh six?
Act of Al-Saris.
Act of Al-Saris, right? So now, they're having a, a, a Constitution Assembly, they're talking to the Senate, they're talking about ratifying the Act of Al-Saris, and after that, putting it into full force, right, in effect. So now, you go back, now they're talking about how you put together legislation, dealing with what? Expatriation, right? Or how to deal with protections abroad by their citizens? But today, we're gonna learn about expatriation, right, or repatriation, okay? But it's all about legislation, keep that in mind, they're talking Congress. This is what the Moors gotta learn, it's all about the pen, ain't about your mouth, ain't about your verbal decrees. It's about your government, three branches of government working side by side, checks and balances. Alright, so we're gonna start here, okay? Now we're on page eleven. Eleven, ten, now we on eleven, according to PDF. Okay, we're gonna start here in the highlighted area, okay?
Hey, uh, as to the second point, we recommend, A, the passage of an act declaring that expatriation of an American citizen may be assumed. First, when he obtains naturalization in a foreign state. Second, when he engages in the service of a foreign state, and such service involves the taking of an oath of allegiance to such state. Third, when he becomes domiciled in a foreign state, and such domicile shall be assumed when he has resided in a foreign state for five years without intent to return to the United States. But, an American citizen residing in a foreign state may overcome the presumption of expatriation by competent evidence produced to a diplomatic and concert officer of the United States under such rules and regulations as the president shall prescribe.
Pause, okay. So what are we reading right now? This is about them putting together legislation on how you become an expatriate of the United States. Right? It's all about evidence to prove that you're an expatriate. But let's make this more germane about Moors, listen. This third section. When he becomes domiciled in a foreign state, and such domicile shall be assumed when he has resided in a foreign state for five years without intent to return to the United States. But an American citizen residing in a foreign state may overcome the presumption of expatriation by competent evidence. You see the word competent? Notice how they keep using that word all the time in international law? Okay, well, what's competent evidence for Moors? To show that we immediately retired to Morocco. Okay? Now you gotta show them what? Law, isn't this what they talking about? Legislation? Law. Right? Your Constitution is the first semblance. Your Constitution is the law of restoration, is the law of return. Is the law of expatriation. What about expatriation? You're an expatriate of the United States, America. Now you a what? Repatriation back to Morocco. So it's expatriation from America and repeat, repatriation back to Morocco. Through what? Competent written history. This is the competent authority, this is the competent evidence. This is what Malcolm was talking about, this is what Ilmael Shabazz was talking about. What is nationalism about? What is independence about? Constitutions. It's about a restoration, you must restore your land back to Morocco. Let's continue. So what is evidence about? Okay. Let's talk evidence. Okay. Let's talk evidence, what do the Moors need as evidence? Right? Because the United States created a legislature that says, people gotta show evidence that they're no longer what? American. Burton could not prove that he was no longer what? American. Burton had the obligation to prove that he was what? Moroccan. Well, how do you prove that they're Moroccan? Well, you need evidence, you need proof. This is what, in this same document, now we're gonna read about Morocco, the Moors have read this a thousand times, but did they truly comprehend it? Okay. This is, uh, from the top, from the top.
Mr. Philip charged the affairs to Mr. Root, Secretary of State, on August third of nineteen oh six.
Pause. What happened in nineteen oh six? Act of Al-Saris. Continue.
American legation, tangier, August third of nineteen oh six. Sir, there are strictly speaking no Moroccan laws relating to citizenship of Moorish subjects in Morocco.
Pause. First sentence, did Moors understand the first sentence? Okay, let's break it down. Sir, there are strictly speaking, strictly, strictly, strictly speaking, no Moroccan laws relating to citizenship of Moorish subjects in Morocco. So obviously, you need Moroccan laws in Morocco for Moorish subjects, but what are, what, what, Moorish means what? Moroccan. So you need Moroccan laws in Morocco for Moroccans. How the heck do we turn into Moorish Americans if the first sentence says Moroccan laws in Morocco for Americans? This don't make no sense. From the top, no.
There are strictly speaking no Moroccan laws relating to citizenship of Moorish subjects in Morocco. The fundamental laws of this non-Christian country are based entirely upon the Islamic Code, no parts of which treats of the subject of citizenship.
Pause, so in nineteen oh six, none of our treaties said that we were citizens of America. All of our treaties, including the eighteen eighty Treaty of Madrid, said that we're naturalized in a foreign country. But we had the obligation to return to Morocco with a pen and consent back. But even our own treaties now said we were citizens of the United States, United States, America, they said we were naturalized, it's a difference, it's about words, Moors. Meaning that we was on a protectorate status of the United States, America, we got adopted. They were protecting us. Let's continue.
There are, however, numerous treaties and conventions between the various Christian countries and the Moorish Empire, by means of which citizenship in this country is defined.
Pause. Do we understand that sentence? Okay. There are, however, numerous treaties and conventions, such as the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighties, a convention, Madrid Convention, between the various Christian countries and the Moorish Empire. By means of which citizenship in this country is defined, so what do they mean by? By means of which citizenship in this country is defined, so within the country of what? The United States. How is the United States defining citizenship for who? Moors. You know how they define it? Okay, Fourteenth Amendment, right? Naturalization Act, right? And what else? They understood the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen said what? Let's go to it. As a reminder. What, what did paragraph two say? It said, foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco, according to the rules established by the laws of the United States, America, shall be continued to, to the United States, America, as regards all its effects, without any restriction. So therefore, Mr. Philip, Hoffman Philip is saying, let's take from top. There are, however, numerous treaties and conventions between the various Christian countries and the Moorish Empire, by means of which citizenship in this country is defined. So in the United States, America, they're using the Fourteenth Amendment, Fifteenth Amendment, Naturalization Act, and all of that got secured by what? The convention, Treaty, Treaty of Madrid, which is Madrid Convention, secured the fact that Moors can be what? Subjects. Subjects. Subjects, right? The Moors are subjects. Subjects. Right? Subjects in a foreign country. And that foreign country, each country, foreign country can maintain its laws, established laws, the United States, America was establishing laws, civil and criminal jurisdiction, and all its effects, all its effects without any restriction. Why? Because Moors didn't what? Acquiesce, see right there? Reacquired, they acquired the Moors' consent. It's called tacit acquiescence. Why? Because we didn't follow the instructions of paragraph one. Paragraph one was the instructions. You wanna pick out the Rubik's Cube, follow the instructions. Dorothy wanted to go home, Goodwin said, follow instructions. Here's the instructions for Moors to go home, paragraph one, and then there's paragraph two, in case you don't come back home. Let's read paragraph one. No.
Uh, right of protection in Morocco of July third of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen. Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall, after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco, unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco.
Right, so if you don't follow this first paragraph and return to Morocco and choose between entire submission of the laws of the empire, right? If you don't do it, then the United States is invoking paragraph two. That says, foreign naturalization heretofore acquired acquiesced by subjects of Morocco, because, because they didn't follow paragraph two, now they're what? Obligated to the rules established by the laws of the United States, America, and shall be continued to the laws of the United States, America, and all its effects, without any restriction. Okay, let's go back to Hoffman Philip. There are, however, numerous treaties and conventions between the various Christian countries and the Moorish Empire, by means of which citizenship in this country is defined. So they talk about these treaties, they talk about the Convention of Madrid that defined, defined how the naturalization is being invoked against the Moors. You gotta understand this, Moors, this is, the United States, America has civil and criminal jurisdiction over us through our own treaties that said right of protections, right? Right of protections in Morocco, go back to the treaty, eighteen eighty. It says right of protections in Morocco. So who's protecting us in Morocco? Paragraph two, the United States, America is protecting us in Morocco. Under their what? Laws. Their established laws. Are you seeing this, Moors? Okay, let's go back there. Take it from top.
There are, however, numerous treaties and conventions between the various Christian countries and the Moorish Empire, by means of which citizenship in this country is defined. But, as I understand, from the above acknowledged instructions, that it is not the desire of the department to call for a report upon such lines. I will therefore confine these remarks to general conditions existing which may possibly be of some use in connection with the information desired. One, citizenship in Morocco may be said to be governed by the laws pertaining to the same in other countries, with the exception that all persons residing in Morocco who cannot prove foreign citizenship or protection are considered ipso jure as Moorish subjects.
Alright. So good brother Ilmael Shabazz, commonly known as Malcolm X, talked about nationalism, he talked about independence, right? He talked about Africa and China, and Africa and China established constitutions. And through those constitutions, those constitutions claimed their own. They allowed the Africans to do what? Repatriate back to being Africans. Instead of being slaves and colonized people of France, right? Dutch, Germany, Italy, Spain, Great Britain, and all the rest, right? So the Africans reclaimed their own, now listen. Section one, citizenship in Morocco may be said to be governed by the laws pertaining to same in other countries, so listen to what they said. Earlier, they said, there is no citizenship in Morocco. Right? Now, suddenly, section one is a citizenship in Morocco, well, wait a minute. First, they said there's no citizenship in Morocco. Now they saying there's citizenship in Morocco, what, what happened? We became citizens because we're naturalized, it's a paperwork thing, it's a sheet and hypothecation of paperwork that's making us citizens. and hypothecation of paperwork that's making us citizens. Our consequently Moroccans in Morocco, well, we've been subjugated and naturalized in their jurisdiction because they have what? Constitutions in a state. What don't we have? Constitution in a state. So now, so we're citizens of their laws. They established laws that made us citizens. Listen, section one, citizenship in Morocco may be said to be governed by the laws pertaining to the same in other countries, with the exception that all persons residing in Morocco who cannot prove foreign citizenship or protections are considered ipso jure as Moorish subjects, right? So what they're saying? If Moors can't prove foreign citizenship, right, in a different country, let's say Moors went to Mexico, got Mexican naturalization status, Mexico would represent that Moor. Or right here, or protection, protection by who? The Moroccan government, right? Protection by who? The Moroccan government. Treaty of Madrid, right? Article fifteen, paragraph one. Now, once you make your choice, you choose between entire submission of the laws of the empire, now also you come under what? The protection of what? The government of Morocco. That's where you get your protections from. You understand? Okay, let's go back. So Moors have to even prove, if you cannot prove foreign citizenship or protections, then it means you're just considered an ipso jure Moor subject. And if you're considered an ipso jure, meaning a fact, a Moor subject, then guess what? Now you come back over. Madrid Convention, paragraph two, foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco, Moroccan subjects, according to the rules established by the United States of America's laws, shall be continued to the United States of America regardless of all its effects without any restriction. Go back to Hoffman Philip. So he said, these Moors haven't established their own state, their Moorish government, right? They had to do it, and they're still considered ipso jure as Moor subjects. And the United States of America still got jurisdiction over them. Section two and three, no.
Two and three. Moorish subjects lost their nationality only by becoming naturalized in or protected by another country having treaty relations with the Moorish Empire.
They tell you the whole story right there. That's that easy. Moors have been reading this for decades. Section two and three. Moorish subjects lost their nationality. Hmm, I wonder what their nationality is that they lost? It was Moroccan. It's Moroccan. Now they call the Moors what? Former Moors. Resolution seventy-five of nineteen thirty-three, they call the Moors former Moors. Why they call them former Moors? Because now you're just a citizen in the United States of America. They wanna call you American. That's why in Resolution seventy-five, they call you what? A speedy and thorough what? Americanization of these former Moors. Section two and three, Moorish subjects lost their nationality of Moroccan only by becoming naturalized and becoming Americans in or protected by, now we're protected by who? The United States of America. The United States of America got what? Treaty relations with the Moors. Ie the Moroccan Empire. But listen, then they turn around, gave the Moors the answer to the test. This is the most egregious part right here. Now they gonna tell you how we lost our nationality. Right here, no. It was.
It was established by the Convention of Madrid concluded on July third of eighteen eighty as follows. Article.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco, unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. Foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country shall be continued to here?
Him.
Oh, to him.
Him.
Head him as regards all its effects without any restriction.
So they turn around and copy paste it and put the answer to the test right there. Say these Moors lost their nationality because they're Moor subjects according to what? Treaties.
Madrid.
Treaty of Madrid. Article fifteen, they put it right in front of our faces. Moors have been looking at this for decades. So then the Americans, right, turn around and add insult to injury. They put it right in front of our faces. Then they add insult to injury. No.
The above ruling has never yet been acted upon, and should this at any time be contemplated seriously, a large number of naturalized people, Americans and others residing in Morocco would be affected thereby.
Pause. Are you hear what's happening? Listen. The above ruling, what above ruling? Article fifteen of Treaty of Madrid. The above ruling has never yet been acted upon. And should this at any time be contemplated seriously by the Moors, a large number of naturalized Moors people, naturalized people, who are the naturalized ones? Moors. They talking about you. Americans, who are the Americans? The citizens, the United States Americans. The treaty of peace and friendship between who? Moors and Americans. So they're saying who's gonna be affected? Naturalized Moors. And the Americans of the United States of America and others, who the others? Everybody who's come over here got a visa. Everybody who's naturalized, this is the Italians, everyone who comes over here, including Africans, anybody who comes to the jurisdiction of the United States of America will be affected because now Moroccan law kicks in. Let's take from top. The above ruling has never been acted upon, and should this at any time be contemplated seriously, a large number of naturalized Moors, Americans and others residing in Morocco. Did it say residing in America? Said residing in Morocco, the Empire of Morocco would be affected thereby. Everybody gonna be affected. Why? Because everybody will come under what? The civil or criminal jurisdiction of Moorish courts. That's why. And everybody got paid taxes to who? The Moorish state government and its treasury. That's why they gotta contemplate it seriously. Section four and five.
Four and five. Residence in foreign parts does not affect the nationality of Moorish subjects. And the Moorish government has no means of protecting its subjects permanently residing in other countries, with the exception of a so-called Moorish consul at Gibraltar and a Moorish agent at Cairo, Egypt.
Oh, there's that Cairo, Egypt. Hmm, I wonder why Malcolm was hanging out in Cairo, Egypt. Okay, section four and five. Listen, talking nationality. Residence in foreign parts does not affect the nationality of Moorish subjects. Let's pause right there. You see what they use this word right here, residence? What does residence mean? A temporary stay. Dorothy was in the land of Oz temporarily. She was naturalized in Oz. Residence means temporary, like residence in, like a hotel. You're there temporarily. Section four and five, residence in a foreign parts, right? Oz, I mean Dorothy was a resident in a foreign part. And it does not affect the nationality of Moorish subjects. What was the nationality of Moorish subjects? Moroccans. Because it's what? Your consequently, you are native to the land of Morocco. You've always been Moroccans, and you've always been, been Moroccans, and whoever told you you're American is lying to you. Noah Drawley said we're descendants of Moroccans. Naturalized in America's jurisdiction. What jurisdiction? Their state constitution jurisdiction. You're supposed to return back to your Moroccan state constitution, just like this. You're back in Morocco. You wanna go back to America, you like this. You go back to America. You get sick and tired of America, come on back to Morocco. Guess who was doing that? Neo in The Matrix. There's a story about the Moors. Going back and forth through a portal to diff- different jurisdictions. Section four and five, residence temporary stay in a foreign country, such as the United States of America's jurisdiction does not affect the nationality of Moroccans who have been subjugated. And the Moorish government, what type of Moorish government? Moroccan government has no means of protecting its subjects permanently residing in other countries. So now they talking about permanently residing, right? So notice they went from residency to permanent. You see their choice of words? Okay, what subjects are permanently residing in other countries? Moorish subjects. They're permanently. What do I mean? What makes you permanent?
After five years.
After five years, just kinda stuck. Right? So what does that mean? If you failed to return to Morocco, you have permanently decided to stay in that land in that foreign jurisdiction. It's a permanent stay. This is why you gotta look up the difference between immigration with an I and immigration with an E. Immigrant with an I means you're passing through, you're resident. Immigration with an E means what? You're seeking a permanent residency. Even though those two words don't belong in the same sentence, but they call it permanent residency. That's the word they use. It's not Timur, but that's how they talk. You're seeking a permanent residency in another country. Now you become what? An ex-patriot, expat. You gotta understand what's happening. Take it from top. Four and five. Residence in a foreign parts, right, so the Moors have a temporary stay in the United States of America, does not affect the nationality of Moroccan subjects and the Moroccan government has no means of protecting its subjects permanently residing in other countries abroad, such as in the far west that's commonly known as the United States. The Moors didn't have no way of protecting ourselves. Why? Because we didn't have our governments together over here. We got usurped. We can protect ourselves. Even though the Sultan signed the treaty in nineteen oh six, he, they told France to do what? Help the Moors do what? Have reforms to reestablish themselves in their governments. And the Moors didn't do it in nineteen oh six, because France and Spain didn't help the Moors to bounce back into their governments. So what happened in nineteen twelve? Treaty of Fehd in nineteen twelve, France comes in and starts acting like the Sultan and acting like Moors to govern the great enterprise of the Empire of Morocco. Take it from the top. Four and five, residence in foreign parts does not affect the nationality of Moroccan subjects and the Moroccan government has no means of protecting its subjects permanently residing in the United States of America with the exception of a so-called Moorish consul at Gibraltar and a Moorish agent at Cairo, Egypt. Didn't Noah Drawley come over here talking to us about Gibraltar? Didn't Noah Drawley come over here talking about Egypt? You gotta understand what's happening here, Moors. They answered to the test, but in front of our faces the whole time. Listen. We're gonna read over a case. It's only four pages. What is this? Moor Science Temple of America versus New Jersey. Year two thousand and five. But that's not the full name of the case. Let me show you the full name of the case. Full title, The Great Seal Moor Science Temple of America Incorporated. Who's that belong to? Taj Mahal. This is a case that dealt with Taj Mahal in, in two thousand and five, right? United States District Court, right? Published September twenty eighth, two thousand and five. Alright? So what's the real name of the plaintiff? The Great Seal. Moor Science Temple of America Incorporated, Incorporated. Well, wait, I, I thought. How can you enforce anything this United States of America trying to fight as a corporation? And let me say this for the record. And, and this is not like an attack on Taj. Well, come on, man. You can't say you got the Great Seal and then tie it to the Moor Science Temple, talking about you're a civic woman. Come on, Taj, you already know the Moor Science Temple wanna stick with their church processes. When you tie civics to the Moor Science Temple, you make all the temples now look like they're all doing the same sovereign citizen packages. That's not good. Just be Great Seal, brother, and leave it that. Of America Incorporated. Be the Great Seal of America Incorporated, because you keep telling Moors they're Americans. Let's look at this case. Okay, so it's the Moor Science Temple of America versus New Jersey. Alright, you gonna look that up. Okay, that's this case right here. Okay? Moor Science Temple of America versus Jersey, but they know that they don't put the whole name. Okay, it's the Great Seal, it's Taj's work. Okay, we're gonna read this. It's four pages. Now, before we get started, here's something I need you to understand. As we read this, the judges are absolutely insulting Taj. Here's what you gotta pick up on. They, they're looking at Taj's competency of how he's writing and they're talking a lot of smack to him. Why is that? For two reasons. One, evidently he turned in a document that's lacking in competency. And two, they know who Taj Mahal is. They want to let him know, man, you're supposed to be the best civic Moor ever, and this is what you turned in? Now, let's, let's get our concepts and, and concepts and context correct. What was the Great Seal established? From my understanding, it was established what? Nineteen eighty? This case came out in two thousand and five. Let's do the math. That's twenty-five years. Twenty-five years of studying so-called civics. And this is what Taj put together. This is the summary page. This is the judge talking. Okay, no.
Memorandum and order, Jean Crater, District Judge. One, factual background, The Great Seal Moor Science Temple of America Incorporated and other related entities, the Moors. File the present simple action against various defendants inter alia the State of New Jersey, the Asbury Park Police Department, including individual members of the police department hereinafter collectively the Asbury defendants, and the Wall Township Police Department, including members of the police department herein collectively the Wall defendants. arising out of incidents that allegedly occurred between some of the defendants and an individual or individuals belonging to the Moors organization representing the plaintiff here.
No. Pause. Now, know what they call the Moors organization. Why they call them the Moors organization? Because Taj showed us what? Moor Science Temple Incorporated. Taj ain't claiming to be what? A part of a state. He's not claiming to be the common authority of a state. He's trying to fight them as a corporation. Twenty-five years he been studying at this point. Continue.
Uh, the Moors complaint is extremely vague and the exact causes of action for which the Moors seek relief is unclear. Essentially, the complaint makes no logical sense inasmuch as it is a random rendition bordering on a mishmash of legalese turned into meaningless meanderings.
You see what's happening? The federal court. They talking smack to Taj. It's what you call being facetious. What does facetious mean? Being serious and funny at the same time. They smacking Taj around in this document. This is after twenty-five years of his studies. The federal court, this is how they talking to him. They're daring him because they recognize that Taj don't know what he talking about. And I say that respectfully because we gotta tell the truth. Even Taj said the truth don't require no apology. And look how the federal courts are talking to him. The court said his document had no logical sense and that his document is mishmash. What does that mean? Gibberish. It's meaningless. They said his document is absolutely meaningless. Twenty-five years he been studying at that time. Okay, let's continue.
One, the Moorish Science Temple of America was founded by Timothy Drew, AKA Noble Drew Ali in nineteen thirteen. See uh, the HTP website. The more members of plaintiff, The Great Seal Seven, appear to be followers of Drew's teachings. Drew preached that all African-Americans are of Moorish descendant or descent and thus are not and thus are not citizens of the United States, case law. Uh, Drew instructed his followers that all Moors Americans must carry a Moors passport bearing one's real name, which was often created fictitiously by adding names that Drew claimed corresponded to the three ancient Moroccan tribes, Ali, Bay, and El, to one's given birth name, case law.
Pause. Now, why did the court say they would establish fictitiously? Because no state recognized the Owls, Ilves, and Bayes. The court's telling the truth. It's fictitious if the state didn't issue these identification cards. You got to catch what's being said here. Moors are saying, oh, man, those courts, they, they, they're criminals. No, they're telling you the truth. Your identification card was not issued from a state. It came from already made publications or it came from the temple and the temple was not a state government. I say that respectfully, but it's the truth. The temple don't have no three branches of government. The temple don't have no Sultan, no Wazir, no Prime Minister. The temple don't have a legislative branch and a Speaker of the House. They don't pass bills and laws. They don't have no judicial wrench. The temple is not a state. And neither's already made publications. It's fictitious. Listen.
The Moors claim certain rights as a result of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of seventeen eighty-six, entered into by the United States of America and the Kingdom of Morocco, the treaty. According to the Moors, the treaty subjects them only to the laws of Morocco, including the taxing provisions.
Now, you see how the federal courts are saying, they talking about this treaty again. Guess who was playing this same playbook? Rodney Burton Bay. Doesn't sound familiar? Rodney's case is in twenty twenty-one. This case in two thousand and five. Similar language. Moors are running the playbook. And they keep trying to invoke treaties, but treaties are only between states. Taj has not returned back to Morocco and pledges allegiance to a Moroccan state, so he's still what? Naturalized in a foreign country. But he keeps invoking treaty. You can't invoke treaties when you're still naturalized. You can only invoke treaties when you return back to your Moroccan state and then your state invokes the treaty against the United States of America. Right? State on state. That's Article Three, Section Two, Clause One. Everybody keep talking about enforce the Constitution. I can't tell if y'all been studying it. Where's your state? Let's continue.
Moreover, the Moors did not believe that African-Americans were technically citizens of the United States. Within the meaning of the United States Constitution, as a result of many of the Moors predecessors being brought to the United States as slaves.
Pause. Why do Moors talk like this? Moreover, the Moors do not believe that African-Americans are technically citizens of the United States. Within the meaning of the United States Constitution, pause. See, Tajri Bay don't, he don't teach about the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, does he? So this is why they, Moors keep talking about the Constitution, because they don't study international law. They never took the time to read the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen. The treaty is what's giving the United States jurisdiction over Moors. Not their constitution. Hoffman Phillips talked about this in nineteen oh six. He said, "The United States has various treaties and conventions with the Moors Empire." Ha, and then he says, "The Moors lost their nationality by what? Being naturalized." How will we naturalize? Okay, here it is, for the record, again. "You were naturalized. Foreign naturalization, heretofore acquired by subject of Morocco, according to the rules established by the laws of each country, shall continue to them as regards all effects without any restriction." Paragraph two of a treaty, Madrid, Article fifteen. But what does the Moors keep rambling about? Here's what they keep rambling about. They keep talking about the United States Constitution instead of talking about the treaties. Moors are making mistakes. This is why they going to jail. They don't know what the heck they talking about. And I love all the Moors, but we've been miseducating. Let's continue.
Thus, they contend that descendants of slaves are not subject to the laws established pursuant to the Constitution.
Pause. So what are the Moors subject to? Treaties. We're subject according to treaties. We're subjugated because of the treaties. We're naturalized because of the treaties. We're citizens because of the treaties. Public Law eight fifty-six said what? "The United States of America has jurisdiction as authorized by what? Treaty."
Moors also believe that the Dred Scott decision, Scott versus Sanford, uh, case law, stands for the proposition that African-Americans are not citizens of the United States and thus the duties of citizens, including abiding by the laws of the United States and paying taxes.
Pause. Look what Tajri Bay is invoking. Dred Scott case. Dred Scott case went to Supreme Court in eighteen fifty-six. It was settled in eighteen fifty-seven. What happened after eighteen fifty-seven?
Become naturalized.
Thirteenth Amendment, Fourteenth Amendment, Fifteenth Amendment, Naturalization Act in eighteen seventy, and then what hap- 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 what happened after that? I'll go back to it.
Treaty of Madrid, eighteen eighty.
Treaty of Madrid, Taj. A treaty came out in eighteen eighty, Taj. So to talk about Dred Scott is irrelevant, a treaty Supreme Court law. So just because it said in the Dred Scott case that Dred Scott couldn't be a citizen, now all of a sudden Taj said, no one can be a citizen because of the Dred Scott case. That's not true, Taj. The treaty is giving the United States of America jurisdiction over all Moors that have what? Agwees.
Paying taxes do not apply to African-Americans, case law. Where the defendant offered a defense that his ancestors came from Africa, thus he was a Moors national required to obey only the laws mentioned in the treaty. Recently, within the jurisdiction of this circuit, Moors adherents have been convicted of creating fictitious money orders and checks that were purportedly authorized by the Department of the Treasury and the Department of Transportation, case law. The defendant convicted of trying to pass fake Department of Treasury checks for twenty-five million dollars, case law, United States versus Harris. Defendants in Southern New Jersey created thousands of fictitious money orders for more than fifty million dollars in alleged scam victimizing banks, utilities, lenders, and a casino, case law. Unfortunately, all of the Moors filings in this case were virtually unintelligible.
You see that? They saying that Taj's document he turned in lacks intelligence. That's a huge slap in the face. Someone who's been studying for twenty-five years. Look how they coming at Taj. They know Taj is what? Stateless. They know Taj is what? A Moors subject. They know Taj is what? Naturalized. They know Taj is still a citizen of the United States and Tajri Bay comes under civil and criminal jurisdiction of the United States of America. That's why they talking to him like this.
The allegations and the complaint seem to stem from the impounding of a vehicle allegedly owned by an individual with the given name of Lee Sean, quote, AKA Lord Noble Nature L Bay. While the complaint fails to comport with anything approaching standard pleading procedures and contains no references to an individual plaintiff or discreet actions causing harm or damage, plaintiffs appear to allege violations of federal law, among other things, violations of civil rights, racketeering, kidnapping, conspiracy, and high treason.
Pause. Tajri Bay said that Moors are not citizens of the United States of America. Then why does Taj keep teaching everybody to enforce the Constitution? How can you say the United States of Amer- or citizens of the United States of America are violating your rights as a Moors of a separate jurisdiction? You got to understand what I'm saying. Moors are saying, I'm not a citizen, so they said I'm over here out of that jurisdiction, but yet keep invoking the laws of the United States of America to tell the United States of America, you violating my rights. Even though your rights supposed to be of Morocco. And you keep jumping over here in America telling America, you better do what I tell you, but oh, by the way, I'm not in your jurisdiction. But since I don't have my own state and I don't have my own laws, I don't have my own judge, I don't have my own Prime Minister, I don't have my own Speaker of the House and legislative branch, I'm going to keep trying to enforce your laws and tell you how to treat me. All because I'm stateless. So it's an oxymoron. It's a contradiction to keep saying you're not a citizen of the United States of America, but yet you keep trying to enforce the American's Constitution to get your remedy. This don't make sense. Moors don't realize it, but they are admitting by default that they are stateless and don't have their own Moroccan laws.
But plaintiffs do identify each of the defendants in the complaint. From reading the complaint, the court can divine that each of the defendants are citizens of the State of New Jersey.
You see what the federal court just did? Is naming the parties. It said, no, these Moors writing this document are Americans. They are naturalized Moors subjects in the jurisdiction of the United States of America. And their birth certificate or their permanent residence is New Jersey and is not Morocco. Because Taj ain't even talking about a Moroccan state. He ain't talking about a Moroccan Constitution. He ain't invoking Article fifteen of Treaty of Madrid. He's not proving anything about who he is or who the rest of the defendants are. He hasn't introduced any evidence. Now, don't get me wrong, it's a summary, but the courts would have mentioned all these things. But we already know Taj don't have it. Start from here.
Defendants are citizens of the State of New Jersey and all of the actions alleged in the complaint appear to refer to events occurring in localities within the State of New Jersey. Asbury Park is a municipality within the State of New Jersey. Wall Township also is a municipality within the State of New Jersey. Because of the nearly unintelligible nature of the verbiage contained in the complaint, the causes of action that the Moors attempt to bring or assert are not apparent. Nevertheless, it appears from the face of the complaint and a plain reading of it that no defendant is a citizen of Pennsylvania and none of the alleged acts took place within the Eastern District of Pennsylvania.
All right, so once again, they're insulting Taj, right? Unintelligible nature of the verbiage. The court is saying, man, we can't even understand what the heck he talking about. It lacks incompetency. You claiming not to be a citizen in the United States of America, then why don't you write like a dignitary of a foreign state? How would a dignitary deal with what's called the Vienna Convention on Council Relations of nineteen sixty-three? How would a Minister of Foreign Affairs write? How would a consul general write? How would an ambassador write? Right? Listen. Isn't this what the Moors keep talking about, enforce the Constitution? Okay. How would an ambassador write of Article Three, Section Two, Clause One? How would a Minister of Foreign Affairs write of Article Three, Section Two, Clause One? How would a consul general write of Article Three, Section Two, Clause One? This is why the court is clowning Taj. They saying, man, the way he wrote it, we can't even understand what you talking about. You don't write like a dignitary. And you, you don't even write like a competent attorney or barrister of the United States either. This, this is the federal courts. I don't say this to be an antagonist against Taj. We're reading documentary evidence. This is for the record, two thousand and five. But Moors keep saying enforce the Constitution and we don't know how dignitaries write. Continue.
To initiate this legislation, the Moors filed a document entitled Petition for Rite of Mandamus. In class action herein after the complaint.
Pause. Lord have mercy. Listen, Moors. This is Taj's writing this. Listen what the, the judge said, the federal judge said. To initiate this litigation, the Moors filed, right? Taj filed a document entitled Petition for Rite of Mandamus. We all hear Taj talk about this, right? Okay, what's a rite of mandamus? No.
Uh, we command. Mandamus is a Latin word that means we command. It is a writ or order from a higher court to a lower court, a public official or a public authority. It requires them to do or not to do a specific act that the law obliges them to do or not to do. It is used when there is a legal right that is denied by someone who has a legal duty. It is an extraordinary remedy that is only available when all other judicial remedies fail.
Okay, so Taj wrote this, petition a rite of mandamus, and who can write a rite of mandamus? Only higher courts to a lower court. Is, is Taj saying he a judge now? But Taj taught all the Moors to write this like all the Moors are judges. This is why they threw already made publication, they put the word judicial notice. Everybody's a judge, huh? Well, I can't wait to see all those public inaugurations of all those judges that took their oath to the state. That's going to be thousands of them. Because everybody's a judge. Ain't nobody the Prime Minister, nobody's the legislative branch. Everybody's a judge. Including Taj. Taj wrote this. This is why the court's laughing at him. They say this man don't know what he's talking about. He, he's not the competent authority of a state. Okay, let's go back to Article Three. Article Three says what? Article Three, Section Two, Clause One. Moors say, what is the Constitution? It said the judicial power. It's talking about judicial power in Article Three. Okay, then here comes Taj. He's trying to use judicial power petition a rite of mandamus and he's not a judge. That's absolute incompetency. And tell you the truth, it's fraud. It's impersonating a public official. This is why the judge is talking to him like this. Now, he's about to, he's about to disclose who wrote this document.
The Asbury Park Police Department thereafter filed a motion to dismiss. Document two, document number two, Moore, Minister Taj, Tariq Bay filed a motion in opposition and opposing Asbury defendants' motion to dismiss.
So he's writing like he's a judge. No, I block your motion to dismiss. I'm a judge and we're going to continue on with these proceedings. This is why this judge is clowning Taj. Continue.
Uh, number, document number five. Defendants So-Cidian, Broyles, and Spalina, all of whom are individual officers of the Asbury Park Police, Park Police Department, filed a motion to join the Asbury Park motion to dismiss. Document number eight, the Moors then filed a summary judgment motion with exhibits.
Pause. So then Taj turns around and submits a summary judgment. He's still acting like a judge. This is why the federal court is laughing at him. This is shameful. And this is what Taj has taught all the Moors to do, and this is why all the Moors on a conveyor belt, straight to jail. They think they can dismiss stuff. Default judgment, rite of mandamus, like we're judges. You got to be the competent authority of your state. You got to be elected judge by your state. You don't have a state that have a constitution and that constitution has to be ratified, deposited, and promulgated in accordance to international law. And then you must accede to treaties and become a party to the treaties in order to enforce said treaties. And those treaties have to be deposited with who? The United Nations in accordance to Article one oh two to let them know you become a party to the treaties. You can't talk about treaties unless you become a party to it. Tajri Bay is not a party to the treaties. Why do I say that? Because only a state can be a party to the treaties. Then a competent authority of the state can enforce the treaty through the state. Taj is not a judge. This is why Moors going to jail because of these false teachings.
Uh, document ten, document number ten, the Wall defendants filed a motion to dismiss for lack of jurisdiction.
Pause. Now they filing a, a document for lack of jurisdiction to dismiss. You can't do that unless you're a judge.
Document number twelve, finally, the Moors filed Amendment Nine, complete, at law.
Pause. What's Amendment Nine? What is Amendment Nine? Taj is invoking the United States of America's Amendment Nine, but he says he not a citizen of the United States of America. Then why are you trying to use their Constitution? But while we're talking about it, what's Amendment Nine?
The Ninth Amendment simplified is that the federal government doesn't own the rights that are not listed in the Constitution, but instead they belong to citizens.
Pause. But he said he's not a citizen of the United States. But right here, Article nine is about what? The Ninth Amendment simplified is that the federal government does not own the rights that are not listed in the Constitution, but instead they belong to the citizens. But Taj, you say you're not a citizen. Well, simultaneously trying to invoke Amendment number nine is if you're what? Citizen. This is a contradiction and this is why the judge is clowning him. And this is what already made- And this is what Harvey Bay Publications and unfortunately, good brother Todd Sri Bay is teaching Moors. And Moors are in fellowship instead of scholarship. Look how easy I'm looking this stuff up. Isn't this easy? So, let's finish the reading.
This means the rights that are specified in the Constitution are not the only ones people should be living it to. The amendment was added to the Constitution in the, in seventeen ninety-one as part of the Bill of Rights. The first time the Supreme Court used the amendment to define an unenumerated right was in nineteen sixty-five in the case of Griswold versus Connecticut, which involved the right to privacy.
Right, so Todd is trying to invoke the United States of America's Constitution while simultaneously saying he's not a citizen of the United States of America, which means you can't invoke the United States of America's Constitution if you're not a citizen of the United States of America.
Defendants have moved to dismiss the complaint pursuant to Fed R civ P twelve B. Now it appears that the instant matter may be dismissed pursuant to rule twelve B one, three, and six, as well as pursuant to twenty-eight USC nineteen eighty, nineteen fifteen E two, dismissal for frivolity.
Alright, so the court said, we gonna dismiss this because it's frivolous. You see? Wait, hold up. What does that mean? Frivolity? Nope.
Frivolity. Noun, lack of seriousness, lightheartedness, a night of fun and fri- frivolity. Similar are lightheartedness, levity, joking, joke clarity, gaiety, fun, fr- friv- frivolousness, silliness, foolishness, zanniness, giddiness, fightiness, skittishness, flippancy, facetiousness, inanity, superficiality.
See, he's being facetious. He's clowning Todd. This is twenty-five years of Todd's studies from nineteen eighty to two thousand and five. This is documentary evidence.
Two procedural challenges to the complaint. Rule twelve B one permits the court to dismiss a claim for a lack of jurisdiction. Rule twelve B three permits dismissal for improper venue. Rule twelve B six permits the court to dismiss all or part of an action for failure to state a claim upon which relief can be granted additionally pursuant to twenty-eight USC nineteen fifteen E two, notwithstanding any fa- filing. A civil action wherein jurisdiction is not found solely on diversity of citizenship may, except as otherwise provided by law, be brought only in one, a juristic or judicial court where any defendant resides if all defendants reside in the same state. Two, judicial district in which a substantial part of the events or omissions giving rise to the claim occurred or a substantial part of property that is subject to the action is situated. Or three, a judicial district in which any defendant may be found if there is no district in which the action may otherwise be brought. Here, using the framework of section thirteen ninety-one B, it is clear that no defendant resides in this judicial district. Two, neither the events nor omissions giving rise to the allegations nor any property involved in the instant dispute occurred or exists within the judicial district. And three, none of the defendants can be found in this judicial district. Accordingly, venue is improper in the instant matter. Plaintiff's complaint refers entirely to New Jersey actions and indicates that each of the named defendants are New Jersey residents or entities. Plaintiff's complaint is devoid of any factual or legal basis that connects it to Pennsylvania. Based on these uncontroverted considerations, all of which eman- emanate from plaintiff's own filings, defendants have met their burden of proving that venue is improper case law. The court finds nothing in the complaint to be merit transfer to the District of New Jersey rather than outright dismissal of the action. Therefore, this matter shall be dismissed pursuant to rule twelve B one, three, and six, twenty-eight USC thirteen ninety-one B and twenty-eight USC fourteen oh six A. Because the court has decided that it is without jurisdiction to hear the merits of the case, the court declines to consider the Moors' motion for summary judgment, which is as unintelligible as their other filings. For a conclusion, venue is improper in this court and in violation of twenty-eight USC thirteen ninety-one B. There are no facts that would support finding either jurisdiction or venue in this court. Additionally, the Moors' motion for summary judgment is denied inasmuch as it is not only appears without merit, but because the language constraint contained therein is unfocused and unintelligible. Finally, because the complaint appears both frivolous, unintelligible, and without merit, this entire matter is dismissed with prejudice pursuant to twenty-eight USC nineteen fifteen E two.
Boy, they talking big smack to Todd. Nineteen eighty, year two thousand and five, twenty-five years of studying so-called civics, and this is how the federal court is talking to him. This is shameful, and I, and I tell you the truth, I feel bad for Todd. I'm sure when he, he received this in two thousand and five, they, they smacked him up so bad, he just, he just had to bow his head and dip. Trust me when I tell you, there was no comeback from this. They both said, hit, whatever he submitted was unintelligible. It was both frivolous, unintelligible, and without merit. Why is it without merit? Because he ain't the common authority of the state. He surely ain't a judge.
Order. And now, this twenty-eighth day of September of two thousand and five, upon consideration of the Moors' petition for writ of mandamus in class action, the complaint, docket number one, the Asbury Park motion to dismiss, docket number two, Moore Minister Todd Tariq Bay's motion in opposition, docket number five, defendants So-Cidian Royals and Spalina's motion to join the Asbury Park motion to dismiss, docket number eight, the Moors' summary judgment motion with exhibits, docket number ten, the Wall Township Police Department Sergeant Lancelot, Lancelotti and Sergeant Brockley's motion to dismiss for lack of jurisdiction, docket number twelve, and the Moors Amendment nine complaint at law, docket number fourteen. It is hereby ordered that the Moors' summary judgment motion, docket number ten, is denied. The motions to dismiss, docket number twos, uh, five, eight, twelve are granted. Uh, three, the complaint, docket number one, is dismissed with prejudice, and four, all remaining motions are dismissed. The clerk shall mark this clay, this case as closed. It is ordered. It is so ordered.
Mm-hmm. So what happened? Not only did they dismiss the case. Look at this. They dismissed this case with prejudice. Right, let me, let me go back to it. They dismissed it with prejudice. Number three. The complaint, docket number one, is dismissed with prejudice. Do Moors know what that means, with prejudice? So there are two sta- uh statuses. You can say with prejudice, or you say without prejudice. What does with prejudice mean? That means that Todd couldn't even appeal it to the Supreme Court. They shut him down. They won't let him appeal it even to the Supreme Court. They shut him down, says frivolous. If, if the court would have said without prejudice, that means you can appeal it to a higher court. That means after this, Todd can't do nothing. He was shut down. What's the main reason why Todd was shut down? Let me tell you the main reason why Todd was shut down. It's just right here. Moors science typical America is really what? Corporation. Todd wasn't affiliated with the state. The feds couldn't have talked to him like that if he was a state representative. Because immediately, if he was a state representative of a Moroccan state, guess what Todd would have been invoking? He would have invoked this right here. To contrac- to con- controversies between two Moors states. Then he would invoke what? He would have been what? The ambassador, public minister, or consul, or maybe even the judicial power to have authority over the treaties to settle the case. But he was none of the above. And all the Moors think they can walk in the footsteps of Todd Sri Bay, and you're walking right into the same thing he walked into, which is judges laughing at you. Which means they're laughing at all of us because all the Moors in this together. However they treat Todd is how they're treating us, and we all in this together. We're all brothers and sisters. We're all in this together. So even though it may look like I'm being condescending towards Todd, but the reality is I'm not. I feel sorry for the good brother. He's been trying his hardest. But unfortunately, Todd is miseducated. And he's miseducated the rest of us. And that has created negligence and punitive damages. Now, keep in mind, that, that whole case was about what? Somebody's car got towed or something. And the feds just came in and just slapped Todd up and said, you the best that the Moors got to offer? That's sad. I feel sorry for you, good brother, but we gonna fix this, good brother Todd. We gonna fix it. Alright, as I'm starting to close out, keep in mind what I have up on the board. This is what Todd should be teaching right here. Todd has issue. He, he was trying to settle a dispute, right? But what did good brother Malik Shabazz say we need? Okay, he said what? Il Malik Shabazz, commonly known as Malcolm X, was on a path to independence and nationalism through the United Nations organs. Malcolm studied Africa and China's statehood claims of independence and acts of decolonization. And was it that Malcolm, i.e. Il Malik, wanted everybody to do because he's on the path to the United Nations? Well, when I started studying the United Nations and I started studying international law, I realized what? That we need to stay constitutions in order to have independence. It's all about constitutions, Moors. That way you can be the common authority of your state. And then your state becomes your representative. We have three fresh governing apac as an example. So I say to good brother Todd Sri Bay, I extend my hand in fellowship to you, good brother. We gotta change the education of the Moroccan empire. It's time for you to course correct, good brother. I, I love you. I, I, I have both arms off to you. But as you can see, you've been getting your keister kicked. And so have your students. It's time for us to teach the right history about the Moors. So I'm willing to work with you, good brother. Alright? I am with that. Islam.